Okay, thank you everyone for coming out. Just a quick note before we get started. Mr. David Root County Attorney, he's under the weather. He's on the phone. We're gonna try to save his force as much as possible. I need on him sometime when we do need him. With that being said, today's July 15th, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Oconee County Council. Let's begin with a moment of silence. Mr. Attorney James, would you lead us in prayer?
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for this day. Thank you for everyone coming out this evening. Lord, you tell us in your word to be swift to hear, slow to speak, slow to wrath, Lord. Lord, I just pray that you give us the grace to be able to do that this evening. And we just pray and ask for your wisdom because we're going to, Lord. Just help us in all the decision making that we will seek your honor and your glory. All this we ask in Christ.
All right, Mr. Dick Mangold, would you lead us in prayer?
Salute my pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have spoken with Mr. Root beforehand. He has no comments for county attorney. Next, we have Mrs. Amanda Brock, county administrator.
I do not have any idea this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
None either. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Before we do that, so any items anyone would like to pull off the consent agenda. Here and now, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Now we have public comment session. Just a reminder, we have 50 minutes for public comment, five minutes per person. As you get to the four-minute mark, I'll keep time on my phone. I hold up a yellow warning sign that you have one minute left. Then I'll hold up the red stop sign when the time has expired. We ask that you please maintain comments related to county business and the work we're doing here.
Jody Gallin. Chairman Durham and council members, I am Jody Gallin of Seneca. I'm in Oconee District Five. I found it interesting to listen and to watch the behavior of our county chair over the county council chair over the past few years. Ever notice how in January, after the biannual elections, he's very careful to throw his OCC followers a bone? This year, it was the anti-DEI ordinance, which really meant nothing for this county. Equal opportunity and non-discrimination laws remain on the books, which protect applicants and county employees. And there are plenty of resources out there to help people if these laws are ignored and people are watching and listening. During his meaningless bone-throwing time, Chairman Durham reportedly said that, repeatedly said, that if he could build a wall around Oconee and keep it exactly the way it is, he would. But that's not possible, he said. Similarly, in a 2021 OCC newsletter, editor David Nix stated that the OCC was, and I am quoting directly, "focused on residential well-being and services to residential backstreets, wants to have limited events to attract out-of-towners, recreation and tourism, so as not to attract outsiders, wants to maintain the cultural status quo, that is, maintain town culture as local and rural," remember that word, "focused on lower taxes and frugality with funds." If he and his right-hand valedictorian really want to keep Oconee the way it has been, then why did Chairman Durham in this council support a $25 million bond to expand sewer into one of the most undeveloped and unincorporated areas of the county? It was certainly possible to vote against the sewer. And by the way, I'm not necessarily against it. I'm just saying sewer is a pro-growth thing. Which brings us to today's third and final reading of the amendments to the Oconee County Conservation Bank ordinance. The Conservation Bank has been key to providing incentives for projects that conserve family farms, natural resources, streams, and other important conservation projects using donated funds, not taxpayer money. Instead, the amendments would allow non-conservation projects, including docks, boat ramps, and digging of private wells, very susceptible to quid pro quo. Clearly, the Oconee Conservation Bank would help, would help keep Oconee the way it always has been. It would help that. So the chairman is misleading you. He's misleading you. He is a big-time, pro-growth council chairman. This, my friends, is the bait and switch by Durham. Promise one thing, do another. Perhaps you've changed your mind, and if so, what's in it for you? I'd like to also make a comment about healthcare with the so-called big, beautiful bill that was passed. There are 15 rural hospitals that are at risk of closure in South Carolina. Oconee Memorial is one of the top five. And it's based on three consecutive years of negative margins with cuts to Medicaid funding, which reimburse hospitals directly, not individuals, for care. Our hospital is even more at risk. And I just want to put that out there because we, and this is a bipartisan issue. I think we all want to have a good hospital in Oconee County. So if you haven't talked to the folks who are in charge of that funding and get us some relief, it might be a good time to focus on that issue. As a pro-growth council, facing the loss of federal funding, you've got a big job taking this laissez-faire, hands-off approach on growth and pulling funding, amending our Conservation Bank and ignoring the well-being of all of your constituents and our factories and our businesses could destroy quality of life in Oconee. Now, you know, it's by my accent, you can tell I'm from here, okay? I'm from here. And I really think we need to step up and address these issues because as former Oconee County Sheriff Floyd Owens said, "The same people who put you in will put you out." Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Susan Blunt, and I also live in Seneca. I just have a quick question. I read Amendment Chapter 20. It's going to prohibit or restrict conduct, and you're making some changes to it. One of the additions you want to make to it is obstruction of public streets. And I'm just wondering if that's aimed at the peaceful demonstrations that have been held locally here in Oconee County, especially in Seneca. We have had two so far. They have both been peaceful. We have not encroached on the streets. There is another one coming up this Thursday. And again, we expect it to be peaceful and do not encroach on the streets. So I'm hoping that this particular change to the amendment was not aimed at us, at the local protesters, because we tend to keep it peaceful and out of the streets.
Lee Kies.
I'd like to thank council for this opportunity to speak. I'm Lee Kies. I own a farm in southern Oconee County, about 550 acres. And farm has been in my family for over 100 years. Later on this month, I'll be putting that farm in a land trust. It'll be assisted by the Oconee Conservation Bank and Farm Bureau Land Trust. I think this has been available to farmers. It's been a great resource, and I hope to see it continue as it is. I understand that there may be some other uses for this money, but I hope this will be reserved for its intended use. Oconee County and the state of South Carolina are some of the leaders in the nation in losing farmland to development. A year ago, I received an offer to sell my farm for twice its appraised value. I'm not interested in that. I want to see it remain in agriculture. And my family has been on board with this program. They expect to see it continue. And I hope that council will consider keeping the Oconee Conservation Bank funded. I understand this is from private donations. And we want to see it remain as it has been. Thank you.
Red Gardner.
Good evening, gentlemen, people. My name is Red Gardner, businessman in Seneca. I hang out around the Seneca area, and there's a lot of people that are homeless in this town. And resources are a little thin. This ordinance coming up in reference to having the police come to your property and get them off your property without having to send them a trespass order, I think that's a good thing. I think it's great. I try to help as many homeless people as I can. I let them stay on my property once in a while. But I can't handle it, you know? I can put up with so much. But I would really hope that you all formulate something that can help the people that are homeless that want to be helped. That's all I got to say.
Andrew Head.
I'm Andrew Head from Headley Landscape Materials. I'm here speaking for a large group of grading, trucking people. We have some concerns regarding the rock crusher. So I have a list here that we all kind of came up with. We would like to understand how it works. The money, the operations, how it's funded, if it is taxpayer-funded or if it's funded by its own money. We would like to know what we can do to help the crusher be more efficient. Being privately-owned companies, if you are not efficient, you don't make any money. I sell a whole lot of material, a lot of material, probably as much as you do out of the rock crusher each day. I'm not broke down every day. I am not, when people show up to buy product from me, I have it. The Oconee County Rock Crusher, on the other hand, if you have it, you're not filling it. Or if you don't have it, it's because the machines are not running or there's just no pile there. So what we're trying to understand is what is the problem? Is it management? Is it equipment? Is it funding? We're just trying to figure out what's going on. What are we doing about the crusher tearing up all the time? It is every other day, we're getting text messages. We have trucks sitting there for hours, and then they say that, okay, well, it's broke down, but don't know how long it's going to be broke down. It's costing all of us thousands and thousands of dollars because you have no rock. Also, I sell to a lot of people from the county, a lot of people. When I have to buy rock elsewhere from other places, it costs the residents more money. I would say that there's other people that buy more gravel than me, but, you know, we've been having to deal with McNeely's a lot. Y'all's price is going up August 1st. McNeely's went up today. So as long as other people can make more money, they're going to. Oconee County's setting the price for these other quarries. So when y'all go up, they go up too. So when I know that there's a $6, $6.50 price increase coming for out-of-county people, well, if McNeely's just raised their price $2.5 a ton, y'all's price increase did no good. So that being, that being that, what the other thing we wanted to see is, is Oconee County owns the rock crusher. So I know Oconee County roads and bridges, and the county itself is number one. So we're always told all the time is, well, the county needs the rock. The county needs the rock. As of right now, King Asphalt's hauling your pea gravel and your core dust to Pickens, to Liberty. So how is there a guarantee that that's all coming back here? I don't see how you can guarantee that that rock is coming back to Oconee County in the road. Once it leaves, you have no control over, unless it's going to the plant next door. The next question is, as far as residents, I mean, I am a resident. But since I've run trucks in there under a business that pays tax under Oconee County, we're considered a business. So which one is it? Am I a resident or am I a business? Because I'm actually both. So having residents, having the residential pile at the top of the hill is also causing issues with us residents that are businesses at the bottom of the hill. I think we need to try to find more qualified mechanics and electricians. I know y'all have had a hard time finding an electrician, but maybe subcontract with somebody that is on-call immediately is possible. I do the same thing with some of my stuff. If Amanda Brock is over what is going on at the rock crusher, why don't you see her there? So she has a general idea of what is going on. All of us are really frustrated. We know the price is going up. We know that the price increase is supposed to help. But if y'all are going up and the other suppliers just went up almost the same amount, they're still going to buy in Oconee County, and we're still going to be in the same spot. Thank you.
That's all for public comment?
That's all. Councilmember comment?
I would like to, the lady who spoke about the obstruction of streets, this ordinance has been being planned since late last year. And I've not heard of y'all obstructing the street. And if you're not, then it's obviously not going to pertain to you.
Mr. Head, thank you for coming up and speaking.
I don't know what, thank you for coming up and speaking. It is not taxpayer-funded. It's an enterprise fund. Obviously, we do have issues with it. And thank you for coming up here and speaking to that. And also about the, the price increase to our neighbors. I wasn't aware of that. You might have anything else to say?
All right, here and now. Moving on to public hearing. We have one public hearing and a third reading of ordinance 2025-12. I'm going to recuse myself for both items. Mr. Miles, if you will take over the beat from here.
Okay, we'll move right into this public, excuse me, public hearing for the following ordinance, which is ordinance 25, 2025-12, ordinance amended Oconee County Conservation Bank ordinance, Oconee County Code Sections 2-398 through 2-409.
Andy Smith.
Good evening. Andy Smith, resident of Mountain Rest. The first thing I want to do, and I want to speak on the ordinance against the amendment. And the first thing I want to do is, there's been a nonpartisan petition that's been circulated. And I have it. I have all the signatures there. There was an online petition. 338 people signed that. There was a paper petition, 386, for 724 signatures in opposition to the amendment. There were 67 addition signatures in South Carolina, not Oconee County. And there were 89 signatures from out of state, for a total of 880 signatures of folks opposing the amendment. And that's 724 right here in our county. And I would just like to, I think what I need to do is just give you the summary of what the petition was. So, Oconee Council is proposing amendments to the Conservation Bank ordinance that would expand the scope of how conservation bank funds, originally intended solely for preserving natural and agricultural land through conservation easements, can be used. These funds came from charitable donations, not taxpayer dollars, and were meant to support permanent land conservation. The proposed changes open the door for funds to be spent on projects that are not directly tied to land conservation, such as community gardens, recreation infrastructure, and private water systems. Preserve original intent. The Conservation Bank was created to protect Oconee's farmlands, forests, and water resources through permanent conservation easements. These amendments undermine that mission by allowing unrelated projects. Protect donor trust. Funds for the Conservation Bank come from private donors, not taxpayers. Changing the use of these funds betrays the expectations of those who contributed in good faith to protect land permanently. Dilutes conservation impact. Allowing spending on short-term or non-land conservation projects like community workshops, educational signage, and private well infrastructure dilutes the long-term environmental benefits the fund was designed to ensure. Threat to rural character. The original ordinance helps prevent overdevelopment and protects the rural nature of Oconee County. Broadening the fund scope risks encouraging infrastructure projects that could lead to sprawl. Reduces transparency and oversight. While the proposed board will still be involved in project evaluation, the expanded list of eligible projects could make the process more political and harder to track in terms of conservation return on investment. No public demand for change. There is no demonstrated community demand for these amendments. The current ordinance is working as intended, and changes appear to be top-down rather than citizen-led. And finally, permanent easements are perpetual and legally binding. Community gardens, or trail signage or not. Redirecting funds to non-permanent activities undermines long-term stewardship. So I'd like to present all the signatures to the council. So I was on the Conservation Bank for six years. I was chair for five. Very familiar with what it does and what its purpose was. And one of the first things is the donor integrity. You know, I assume, I think each one of you have probably received campaign contributions. And if you then did things that were contrary to what your donors gave you, I mean, I think you'd have a problem with that. They'd have a problem with you doing that. Everybody that contributed to the Conservation Bank fund gave them for one reason. I know that the memorandum of agreement says, conservation initiatives. Well, when Duke gave that money in 2016, the Conservation Bank ordinance had been in place since 2011. And it did one thing. It allowed, it provided for, it supported permanent conservation, nothing else. It was either through fee simple transfers or through conservation easements. That was five years of that ordinance being in place, and that's what the bank was doing when Duke saw it and said, "That's where we want to give the money, because we like what you're doing." That's why they did it. They've told you that. That's the donor giving you their intent, telling you what they want to use the money for, just like your donors for your campaigns. There's no difference. So there's integrity there. Everybody who was a private donor that gave money, the same thing. They gave the money because they liked what the Conservation Bank was actually doing. I have people I talk to trying to raise funds for the Conservation Bank, non-tax dollars. And they said, "No, I don't think so." And this is somebody, people that could give a lot of money. "I don't think so because they don't trust the county council." I said, "It's in the ordinance. It's going to be sacrosanct." And here we are. And I've thought so much about why this is happening, because the logic doesn't hold. The logic that I hear is that, the reason that I hear from your side is that you don't want to take away rights from people in the future for what they can do with their land. But we know if you turn a family farm into a subdivision, you've taken away the ability and the right for anybody to do anything else with that land. So the logic doesn't hold. You know, somebody who puts a conservation easement on their property, and you've heard testimony from people who've done it, they do it for one basic reason, is because they want to share what they value in the property and what you probably value in the property. The scenic value of it, the water quality, the natural rural character of our county, the agricultural farmability of our county. They want that to be there in the future. Land's going to be developed. And, you know, we could be down the road 150 years from now, and, you know, Granddaddy's going to say, "Man, you should have seen this place. And there was a farm here. It's incredible." It's all a subdivision now. I don't know if you've ever felt that, if you've ever seen a place that you loved and thought was beautiful and then saw it gone. I don't know if you've experienced that. I've experienced that a lot in my life. And you got one person who's saying, you have a man here, a farmer, 100 years in his family, could have gotten twice the appraised value, and said, "No, the value that's here in this farm right now, I want it to be there 150 years from now." So when you see subdivisions all around it, they get to say, "This is what it used to look like. This is what it used to be." And there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, that's good. That's sharing. That's being generous. That's what folks are trying to do. So why? The logic doesn't hold. It just doesn't hold. And, you know, there's only one conclusion that I can really figure out. And I just have to call it government greed. That undeveloped land pays you more, less, pays you less taxes than developed land. So it's all about, I know, Oconee County conservatives are all about limited small government. No tax, or less tax burden. But that's the only reason I can see for your, the real reason for your position, is that you want to keep those tax dollars increasing, coming in. There's no other logical reason I can see for your position. And we all understand government. We all understand that government wants more. And you just can't step back from more money coming in. And I think that is really what's going on. And, you know, it may not mean anything to you, but Oconee County has been a leader in this, a leader in the state and beyond the state. I mean, it's really been a great privilege to be a part of this. And know, people look at us and come to us to see how to do this. And we are going from being a leader to being a laughingstock. We really are. I mean, you're turning down a million dollars from Duke Energy to do this. And what's the threat? I mean, how big is Oconee County? I don't know how many acres it is. Okay, we've got public lands here. Okay, take those off. We've got private land here. What percentage of the private land do you think will be in private conservation easements? You know, over time, half a percent? 1%? I mean, that's the threat? I mean, it's very rare. I mean, I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney for 32 years. I've worked in this kind of stuff, these kind of projects, for 30 years. It's extremely rare for private property owners to put their lands in conservation easements. And they think about what you think about. They think about what it means to the people after them. They think about what it means to the people after them, and they decide based on that. And they just see that the value is there. The value to them and the value to you and the value to everybody in the future is there. That's why it holds. There's only one land-use tool that will preserve, will conserve agricultural land, private conservation easements. You're not going to do any zoning to protect ag land. I guarantee that. It's hard to do. There's one tool that farmers can use to protect their land, to conserve their land, and that's a private conservation easement. That's the only tool out there. Otherwise, it's going to develop completely. It's going to totally change. It's a private property right. It's our constitutional right to do with our property what we want to do. An individual's making a private decision to do something that may not be of value to you, it may not seem worthwhile to you to preserve and see our scenic values, our ag land, our farmability, our historic cultural resources, our natural resources protected, our forests protected, our pastures protected. It may not mean anything to you, but it means a lot to a lot of people. It's a real thing. I guarantee you, it's part of why you love Oconee County. There's no doubt in my mind. And that's all we're talking about, is individuals taking their constitutional private property right to protect it, to turn down $2.5 million. I mean, it's amazing. Now, you may have Custeritis, and, you know, one of General Custer's strengths was, "I'd never reverse a Custer decision." We know how that turned out. It's never too late to make a wise decision. Confound your critics. Jump off the bandwagon. Turn this thing around. Now is your opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Andy, that's a little hard to follow, but I'll try anyway. My name is Gary Owens. I live in Salem. I'm the president of the Advocates for Quality Development, AQD, which is a not-for-profit that represents about 5,000 of your constituents in the county. AQD is one of the non-governmental Duke Energy stakeholders that participates in Duke Energy licensing and relicensing projects on behalf of our members. In this role, we negotiate and express approval or disapproval on all aspects of each relicensing agreement. As an active and approving stakeholder in the five-year process to relicense the Kiwi Toxway hydroelectric project, you know as KT, we championed Duke Energy's contribution of $618,000 to the Oconee County Conservation Bank. Like all other stakeholders, AQD supported this contribution with the understanding it was specifically earmarked to fund land conservation easements. These funds play a major role in helping Oconee County landowners, like, you've heard from tonight, legacy Oconee County farmers, who wish to voluntarily put their lands into conservation easements and afford them the ability and capability of doing so. Back in the June meeting, you indicated that you would modify this ordinance and were going to refund the balance of the funds that were in the Conservation Bank back to Duke Energy as you went into third reading. If you continue down that path and pass it in such a manner where you refund Duke's money, then I strongly recommend that you also would refund the balance of the funds to the private donors that also have contributed over the years into that fund. That allows those funds to be contributed into an alternative Conservation Bank funding that would be set up and would continue the original intent, which is to always provide farmers and others the conservation easement capability with help for attorney fees, funding, et cetera. So, please include them in that process if you continue down that path tonight. Thank you.
Members of council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Obviously, I'm Emily Hitchcock, and I am from Mount Rest. I've spoken to you on this matter before, and I have written a letter to the editor, which you may or may not have read. I took the liberty of asking the clerk of council to include those items in the backup materials so that they are available to everyone. I also gave them a copy of what I'm about to say, except, following Andy and Gary, who were both so eloquent, I'm going to go slightly off-script, so please bear with me. First, I still urge you to either, one, vote no; two, make the amendment prospective only; three, sequester the existing bank funds in a separate account to be used solely for the bank's original purpose; or table the matter for further research. My reasons for making this request are as follows. All donors, including Duke Energy, reasonably relied on the express purpose of the ordinance when making their donations. Immediately upon establishment of the bank, board members began soliciting donations for permanent protection of land, as Andy mentioned, and I was one of those board members, also soliciting and helping raise money personally through Oconee Forever and Rally in the Valley. Donors relied on our representations, and why wouldn't they? The ordinance expressly said that the funds could not be directed for any other purpose than permanent protection of land. Oops, sorry. Let me make an analogy. I wanted to make sure that I got this accurate. Suppose the Red Cross suddenly decided that it would use funds donated for emergency relief to start building homes for the poor. While there is no doubt that building homes for the poor is a worthy cause, it is my belief that the IRS and auditors would conclude that this was a diversion of funds donated for one purpose being used to another. I am not a South Carolina lawyer, but ask that you consider the possibility that your proposed action is a violation of South Carolina law, as well as being a violation of the public trust. I can only speak to what my advice would have been when I practiced law in Georgia. I was a member of the board when the decision was made to invest the bank's funds in the state pool. My rough estimate, and it's very rough, is that the accumulated interest exceeds $50,000. Council should acknowledge that interest always follows principle and use the interest funds solely for the permanent protection of conservation lands like the original donations. Finally, well, actually, it's not going to be final, because I'm going to add something. I do want to address the interest of the smaller donors. It is my understanding that a number have written or will speak to council today, including but not limited to Oconee Forever, Natural Land Trust, Rally in the Valley, Laura and Richard Havren, Ernie Lombard, and David at Ellen Plumby. I ask that you honor their request. Please read them, listen to them, and honor what they ask. On behalf of all the donors who did not contact you directly, including those who are deceased, have moved, or made anonymous donations, I ask that any funds that are not protected for the original use for which they were donated to the OCCCB be donated to the Upstate Land Conservation Fund designated for use in Oconee Council, so that they would be used for their originally intended purpose of permanently protecting land in Oconee County. I am in the unique position to represent these donors, as I was one of the anonymous donors, and as I stated, I helped raise over $3,000 that were donated. Let us not forget, as everyone has reminded you, that not a penny is tax dollars, not one penny. These funds were all donated and should be used for the reason they were donated. And a slight follow-up to Andy's excellent analysis of property rights and the Constitution. I would like to illustrate for you something I learned in law school, and I have used to explain property rights to people. It is property rights with a plural S, because it's not just one right. It's a bundle of sticks, and you can remove one of those sticks and sell it. We're probably most familiar with Texas oil rights. People will keep their property but sell the rights to drill for oil on their land. That is one of their rights as a property owner. One of their other rights is to say, "I'm going to sell the development right." And when they do that, whether you're selling the oil rights or the land rights, you're going to enter into a binding private agreement that is negotiated, and that is what controls it. No person, whether you inherit it or buy it, has a right to tell the person recently owning, currently owning it, "I want those rights. I want this right. I want that right." We can separate them each out as many times as we want to. So, with that in mind, I, not surprisingly, think that the argument that future generations can't change the mind about what's going to happen to this property, I say, "Then don't buy it." Thank you.
I'm a Synod address in District 5. I've already spoken extensively on this and talked to my councilman individually, and I just want to say that one of the first things I did when I found out about this, and I know everybody knows I'm a Democrat, I'm not a communist, I'm a Democrat. I own stock and property and worked for the same company as Mr. Elliott did for 28 years and another for 10 years. So, let's don't misrepresent the interest that I'm representing. But one of the first things I did was I called up a very conservative member of my church whose land is in a conservation easement, his farm is in, he and his wife go to my church, and he's very conservative politically and socially. And he could not believe it, because he was part of creating the bank. He put his land in a conservancy before the bank was created. And he called his councilperson, a Republican, did this, a very conservative Republican. As far as I know, that councilperson never returned his call. And we were told at the last meeting that, because I said, you know, I've been saying, "I don't see any groundswell," like some of the other speakers have said, that say that the county wants this. And I've been told tonight that the groundswell was the election. So, that means input doesn't matter. Well, the rules governing what we do here, with people coming in for and against, and we heard a variety of issues today, those rules are there so that new ideas from anybody's political persuasion or opinion can be heard and can possibly alter what somebody's already pre-determined vote is. And I hope that's what's happening today, because this is not a partisan issue whatsoever. And it's a critical issue when we're trying to preserve some semblance of rural undeveloped land and protect our beautiful natural resources. You can read it in the paper every day and on social media, people complaining about all these subdivisions going in. And right on our road, we've got 83 houses going to go in, and it used to be this beautiful rolling pasture out there. Those people didn't have their land in a conservation easement, and they decided to do what they wanted to do with their property. Had they done it differently, which would have been their right to do it, then that land would have been preserved based on whatever restrictions they put on it. So, I wanted to speak at the public hearing also, so I'd be on the record at the public hearing for this specific issue, and urge you to do as some of the other speakers have said, to either table this matter or vote no, because as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Durham has recused himself, and, but he should have recused himself when the agenda was prepared and this was put on the agenda, because that's where it started. And I just cannot imagine people who are saying they want Oconee to be rural, that you would keep this private money that's been donated for this purpose to preserve farmland and natural resources in this county. So, please, vote tonight to table or vote no. Thank you.
Hey, county councilman, I appreciate the time to speak to you. I'm Gary Gallin from District 5. Glenn Hart, you live about a mile away from my house, and I look across the street from where you live, and I think, "Man, I wish somebody would have worked with the Conservation Bank." Don't you? Anyway, I'm going to try to keep this really short. Let's say you want some money to do something really good, and you're in government, and you're looking at making this amendment, so you can do something really good. I want to ask you, is there another source of funds? Is there another ordinance that you could possibly think of? Could you get Mr. Root or an attorney to work with you and figure out, "How can we make a lot of people happy by voting no on this amendment? How can we do that and still do these good things that we want to do?" I don't think there's one of you that would disagree, that you want to do good things for the people that's out in Oconee County. I know you want to. All we're looking at and trying to convince you, there's another way to do it. You don't have to do it this way. Now, y'all probably aligned yourselves, and you're thinking, "Well, if I say yeah, if I say no now, it's going to be tough on me." Well, don't think of it as being so tough if you've got another answer to get the same funds to do the good things that you want to do. Vote no. Mr. Hart, I'm looking at you. You represent me. Mr. Mize, you're a smart guy. I respect you. Please think about this. There's no reason not to vote no. You could look at another source of funds. You can do another ordinance. Please vote no, all of you.
I'm here on behalf of the Agricultural Advisory Board, and I would like this to be included in the next two. We wrote a letter that I will be reading you tonight. The Agricultural Advisory Board has conducted public meetings in every district of the county twice over the past two years. In these meetings, we heard the concerns of our farmers, and one of the biggest concerns, repeated over and over again, was the critical loss of agricultural land to development. According to the 2022 USDA census, agribusiness contributed over $192 million to Oconee County in agricultural products sold, making it a very significant industry for Oconee. The original purpose of the Conservation Bank was clear about funds being used for conservation of ecologically significant land in perpetuity, farmland included. And let's be clear, I'm sure it's been said before, but putting land into conservation does not eliminate a farmer's ability to use the land. In fact, many farmers who've put their farms into conservation would argue that it has helped their operation. They're often paid for the elimination of the commercial development rights to the land, which gives them cash now to expand current operations on their farm, running their operation just as they would have had they not put their land into conservation. Furthermore, property taxes slower to rise without the commercial Furthermore, property taxes slower to rise without the commercial development potential on the land, meaning that a farmer has less financial stress from year to year, all the while still running their operation as they would have had they not put their land into conservation. Landowners can tailor their easement to their future dreams as well. They can cut out property for their kids if they want to build houses in the future. It's not a one size fits all deal. The primary purpose of a conservation easement is to keep commercial developers from developing ecologically significant land that could otherwise be in use supporting our agricultural economy. Now, before we start amending the original ordinance for the Conservation Bank, spending the valuable meeting time broadening the scope of the original ordinance, the Agricultural Advisory Board urges council to instead put their focus on funding the bank so that there is enough money to make conservation feasible in the first place. Members of the Conservation Bank Board have come to us on multiple occasions expressing the need for more funding for current and ongoing applications. If county council should choose to amend the original ordinance broadening the scope of conservation, the Agricultural Advisory Board recommends that council also have a written and concrete strategy for funding these other conservation efforts while still upholding the original agreement with Duke Energy and the other private donors for past and future funding to go directly toward conservation easements. The fact is, Duke Energy is in O'Conne County and they are having an environmental impact on the county. The Agricultural Advisory Board would like to see a more concerted effort from the county to get as much funding as possible from Duke and other entities in order to offset the environmental impact they have on our county and preserve our valuable farmland for future generations. Thank you.
Erin Ramos.
I'm Erin Ramos and I'm here on behalf of the O'Conne Food Council to express our opposition to the proposed amendment concerning the Conservation Bank Board and associated funds. The Bank Board plays a crucial role in protecting O'Conne County's farmland and natural resources. At a time when our nation is losing nearly 2,000 acres of farmland a day, South Carolina ranks among the top 10, sorry, 12 states most at risk. We've lost about 90,000 acres in just five years. Here in O'Conne County, at least 36 new subdivisions and 25 commercial developments have gone up in the past decade, and we keep hearing the same concern from residents, that the pace of development is overwhelming our infrastructure and threatening our very identity of our county, its green spaces, its farms, and its rural character. But beyond what we're losing visually, there's a deeper concern for our food system. Conservation easements are one of the best tools we have to protect farmland from development and ensure that the land remains accessible to new and future farmers. Land in an easement stays affordable, which is really important because over the past decade, prices of farmland have risen 40%. Some might say local food isn't that important, but food has to come from somewhere. And when local farms start to disappear, whether it's local to us, local to California or Texas, we all feel the impacts in higher prices, more imports, and weakened food security. Local agriculture also contributes over $100 million to O'Conne County's economy. At a time when 13% of O'Conne residents are food insecure, including nearly 1 in 5 children, eliminating a tool that supports our local economy and protects food resources is shortsighted at best. To be clear, conservation easements are voluntary and private land rights are constitutional. No landowner is forced to participate, but by weakening the O'Conne Conservation Bank Board or appropriating their funds for other projects, you're sending a very clear message to landowners that their land rights are less important than the interests of county council or out of state developers. It's very telling that if unable to inappropriately expand the use of Conservation Bank Board funds, you would rather return all donated funds and weaken the O'Conne Conservation Bank Board. As public officials, your duty is to protect the best interests of your community. The decision is more than about a board or about funding in general. It's about legacy leadership and your responsibility to listen to the many voices urging you to protect O'Conne's future. You were elected to serve the people of O'Conne County. We urge you to act with integrity, vote based on the voices of the people you serve, and provide opportunity to future generations. As a representative of O'Conne Food Council, as a concerned citizen myself, I echo so many other voices here and at previous meetings when I say, we all vote no on this amendment and we ask that you do the same. Thank you for your time.
My name is Nicole Haylor. I'm an O'Conne County resident and a landowner in Mountain Rest, District Four. I'm also the Executive Director of the Shetou Conservancy, a nonprofit organization based in O'Conne County. The Shetou Conservancy has many programs in and around the tri-state Shetou River watershed, including work as a nationally accredited land trust. I offer my comments both personally as a registered voter who cares about this county and professionally representing the interests of the Shetou Conservancy. Shetou Conservancy has reviewed county council sessions on the O'Conne County Conservation Bank and the many thoughtful public comments that have been shared. We've heard from citizens who worked to found the O'Conne Conservation Bank and from landowners who use the Conservation Bank to place a conservation easement on their private property. And we've even heard from Conservation Bank funders such as Duke Energy who clarified that the corporation's gift to the county must be used consistent with the original purpose or be returned. Why? Because funds donated to O'Conne County Conservation Bank by third parties shall not be redirected by council, Section 2-402 Code of Ordinances. After listening to the comments shared by fellow O'Conne County residents, we were troubled that this council approved and proposed the amendment in each of its first two readings. A motion was even made to return remaining funds and leave forthcoming substantial Conservation Bank fundings for the county sitting on the table. Why is this troubling? Because there is no demonstrated community demand for amendments to the O'Conne County Conservation Bank. The current ordinance is working as intended. Why would this council jeopardize and even turn away funding that its citizens can voluntarily use to exercise their private property rights? Conservation efforts backed by community support have enabled protection of land that boosts the economy of O'Conne County. These include protecting the Stump House Mountain Track, areas along scenic highway 11, the historic O'Conne Station, and doubling the size of Chaw Ram County Park, all economic and cultural assets that can be enjoyed by residents and visitors alike. More good work can be done by the current unchanged provisions of the O'Conne County Conservation Bank that will continue to benefit the county. For example, funds available from the Conservation Bank for agricultural conservation easements, combined with federal tax benefits, can allow our current and future generations to continue operating their family farms on the county's prime soils rather than being forced to liquidate agricultural land assets just to survive. Our O'Conne County farms provide an abundance of produce that helps supply local farmers' markets as well as the Clemson Area Food Exchange. I know the concept of conservation easements involve details that can be confusing and there may be misunderstandings about how conservation easements work and what they do. Here are a few important points. Protecting land, working farms, and even historic structures is completely voluntary. Funds such as O'Conne County Conservation Bank may be available to landowners who choose to do so of their own accord. Each conservation easement is unique. Landowners can decide to retain many rights, including the right to build a home, to own and use the land, to sell the property, and/or pass the land on to their heirs. Conservation easements allow people to protect the land they love and use. As a nationally accredited land trust, the Shetou Conservancy adheres to strict standards and practices. We understand that it is of the utmost importance to be accountable to our members and to our donors. Honoring the donor's wishes on how their funds are used is a fundamental responsibility of any organization. I urge our council members to carefully consider the negative effects of how their proposed amendment will undercut the county's fiduciary responsibilities and commitments. If we hope for corporate and individual donors to invest in our great county, civic officers must be accountable to the donor's wishes and restrictions for the use of their funds. The conservation activities added in the amendment do not appear problematic on their own. The problem is that the proposed conservation activities are not consistent with the basic mandates of how the O'Conne Conservation Bank funds were originally designated. Land conservation has broad support from all sides of the political spectrum. Indeed, I note the Trump administration's recent announcement earlier this month for their Make America Beautiful Again initiative that includes encouraging responsible voluntary conservation efforts, which is exactly what the O'Conne Conservation Bank does. I think we all want our children to be able to experience the beauty of O'Conne County as we have. We want them to be able to visit a local farm and know where some of their food comes from. We want them to have clean air to breathe and clean water to drink. And maybe we have a specific wish in mind, like maybe you want your great grandkids to have the opportunity to be able to hunt or fish on the same property that you do. Conservation easements can play a role in protecting the land and agricultural assets of our county and help protect it as the very special place it is today. I respectfully ask council members to carefully consider the words of myself and the other county residents who have offered input on this issue. Please don't make a move that will ultimately strip our county of its present and future funds for the O'Conne County Conservation Bank, which so many work to establish and that has provided a unique resource for the citizens of O'Conne County.
I want to say, I had something written to say, a statement, but I agree with what has been said and so in the effort to leave time for more people, just I agree with what has been said so far.
Mr. Mize and Members of Council, my name is Frank Holloman. I live in Greenville and I'm president of Natural Land Trust. Nonprofit, this exists over 50 years and our mission is to protect South Carolina's Blue Ridge Mountains and special places in the Piedmont. Although I now live in Greenville, my wife and I both grew up in O'Conne County and are both graduates of O'Conne County High Schools and we own a farm and home in Cottaros Community. That farm has been in my wife's family since the early 1800s. As for my family, my great-great-grandfather helped organize Bethel Presbyterian Church and Pickett Post. My great-grandfather was the first treasurer of O'Conne County and head of the O'Conne County Confederate Pensions Board. My grandfather was the mayor of Wahala. My aunt was the mayor of Seneca. My uncle was the superintendent of the Oakway School District. And my mother grew up on Retreat Street in Westminster. So I say that to you in part to let you know that our family and our direct ancestors have owned property and paid taxes in O'Conne County since its founding in 1868 and were among the original settlers and organizers of the communities of the county. Natural Land Trust, oh, I'd also would like to point out that I helped save the land around O'Conne, around Stump House Mountain and led the effort to protect that area and Issa Quina Falls, which was successful. And on two occasions have assisted O'Conne County in putting together hundreds of thousands of dollars to expand, on two occasions, Chaw Ram County Park. I'm here today particularly because Natural Land Trust did make a $3,900 contribution to the Conservation Bank, O'Conne County Conservation Bank. And we made that contribution in connection with, the bank was kind enough to make a grant to us, but in the end, we weren't able to use the grant. So we refunded the grant and in connection with that, in good faith, made a $3,900 contribution. Now, as you might imagine, I'm the volunteer president of Natural Land Trust. We are a 501(c)(30) charity. Our funds are supposed to be used for conservation. And we gave some of our money to the O'Conne Conservation Bank on the understanding and appreciation for what they've done, but also on the understanding it would be used for I've sent the council an email to suggest for our funds, there are two possible solutions. One, Duke Energy is obligated to use that money for land conservation. They have to do that by law. That's not, they have no choice. You all can't alter that for them. And so this, our, the funds we paid back were in effect appreciation for a grant the bank made for money Duke gave them. If you give the money back to Duke or set it aside for Duke to use for, to be used for conservation, we think our money should follow that money. Alternatively, if you don't want to do that, give it back to us. And if you give it back to us, we will spend it on protecting and conserving resources and land in O'Conne County as we have done many times before in coordination with the Given my ancestral history in the county, please let me also say, I hope the council would consider leaving the bank as it is for conservation. You all can do other things if you want to, that's your right, of course. But the funds that were put in the bank for conservation, personally, I think, is a moral and legal obligation to use them for that purpose. But beyond that, I think it's good for the county as a whole, just as so many places discover, not only do they make more money by having beautiful conserve places that people want to go, if you look at any calendar about O'Conne County or even South Carolina, what's on the front of it? Issa Quina Falls, not a subdivision, Issa Quina Falls, which we protected in this conservation efforts. That's what brings people here. That's what we all remember fondly from our childhoods and our, we watch our children and grandchildren enjoy it. So I would urge you, keep this Conservation Bank. But if you decide you're not going to do that, either give us our $3,900 back, which we gave out of conservation fund, charitable funds, understanding it would be used for conservation, or let it go with Duke's funds for the same purpose. But more than anything else, I hope you'll choose to do something for conservation to preserve the history and heritage of the county, which is in my DNA. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mize.
My name is Taylor Howard and I'm an O'Conne County resident. I'm not in favor of the proposed amendment that's before this council denied and I'd ask you to say no to it. That's not really why I'm here. I'm here to express some serious concerns I have with how we got here in the first place. In the way of some background, I served as a representative for my district, District Four, on the Conservation Bank between March 2023 and February of this year. During that time, we were able to protect farmlands, woodlands, wildlife habitat, and really interesting ecological areas. More importantly, we did this without spending a single taxpayer dollar. In October of 2024, I received an email from the county stating that my term was set to expire and that I was eligible for reappointment. I was able to serve a second term. So in November, I submitted my application for reappointment. Heard nothing. December comes along, nothing. January, nothing. Then on February 4th, I noticed that this council had another meeting. And as a topic of discussion on that meeting, it was listed as appointment to the Conservation Bank Board. In fact, Scuddy Walker was approved to serve a second term on the Conservation Bank In fact, Scuddy Walker was approved to serve a second term on the Conservation Bank Board, and this council appointed two additional members to the board. Absent from this discussion was my application. Wasn't brought up, it was like it never happened. And I found this surprising, because at that point, I knew I had submitted my application on time, and I knew that no one else had applied. So I did on February 14th what I thought was the reasonable thing. I sent each one of you an email. I attached my application in a cover letter. I said, "Councilman, give me a call, I'd love to chat with you." And what did I get in return? Radio silence. Not even a, "Thank you for your submission, have a good evening, we appreciate it." Nothing. Lo and behold, on February 18th, I was replaced. I felt that I was the only applicant. I should have gotten it by default, but I didn't. And part of me wonders if that's why we're here tonight. Is that why this proposal is now before this council? Did my removal have something to do with that? Again, I agree with all the talking points you've heard tonight, and some you're going to hear after me, but I want to leave the council with some questions. Number one, is that the type of governance we want? Are those the types of games that the council is willing to play? Number two, this whole amendment stuff seems so unnecessary to me. Do we not have more pressing things we could be focusing on? Should we not be here tonight sticking our heads together figuring out, hey, what can we do to fix our roads? Should we not be here tonight trying to figure out what we can do to end domestic violence in Oconee County? Instead, we're wasting time for something that is completely unnecessary. So tonight, I'm kindly asking this council to consider the profound implications of this amendment and to do the right thing for the long-term and permanent preservation of Oconee County's cherished places. Thank you.
My name is John Richardson. I live on Lake Kiwi in District One and in Harbor Oaks subdivision. I'm also represent the Harbor Oaks Owners Association. Thank you for giving us some time to talk to the council tonight. We are very much opposed to these changes. You have a ordinance which provides for conservation and preservation of some rural land and farms, et cetera, and it uses donations from people. It's very good, and I think almost everybody would agree, that's something we all like to have. And we're concerned we can't have it, we see what appears to be a philosophy in the county now of development for the sake of development, and I don't think that's good. Having been to several of the more recent planning commission meetings, they're trying to make changes to ordinances that allow higher density development on roads that were never intended to allow for that sort of development and on private roads. And that's just, we're seeing is development, again, development for the sake of development, and I guess to increase revenue. These particular changes, how could you possibly, if you really believe in the Conservation Bank to start with, how could you possibly vote anything but no? Because you're undermining the whole purpose of the bank. Who is going to provide donations on the basis of, we don't know what it's going to, you know, what you're going to use the money for? And it looks like that these changes would allow a potential for misuse of funds. And I know everyone here tonight would say, "Oh, no, we're going to really do really great things with them." Yeah, we've all heard that before. If it's not written down and codified in law, then there's a good chance that the funds could be misused. So who is going to, who's going to donate money for that? And if people have already donated, hopefully you're going to give all that money back because you're obviously making changes now that allow for the fund to spend in ways that was never intended to. So I'm a big no, and subdivision and everyone I know is a big no. So I hope that you do the right thing tonight and vote no. And I hope in general that the council is looking into why we're making all these changes to allow higher density development in subdivisions, such as the ones the planning commission is considering for private roads and other things. So thank you for your time, appreciate it, and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, esteemed council members, Ms. Brock and Mr. Root. For the record, my name is Perry Smith. I currently serve as the vice chairman of the Oconee County Conservation Bank. I'm also the vice chairman of the Oconee County Republican Party and the president of the Oconee County Conservatives, also known as the OCC. We're the biggest grassroots movement this county has ever seen. I come up here because I care about Oconee, and I care about making things right. I care about Oconee enough that I know it makes up 405,000 acres. That's how much I care about it, 7% underwater. Let me start by saying thank you all for having the backbone to explore expanding the scope and mission of the Conservation Bank. Conservation is a worthy cause, but expanding who benefits and how we deliver it is not only timely, it's dang overdue. This council deserves credit for daring to question the old system and do what's right by the people. Now let's set the record straight about the funding everyone's hollering about. The money from Duke Power isn't just free money, it ain't falling from the dang trees, it ain't falling from the sky. It comes here as a part of Duke's regulatory obligations, because certain lands are taken out of public use, permanently altered for their benefit and for all of ours. That's the real environmental cost. And that funding, let's be clear, is to help mitigate those impacts. And let's not forget, it ultimately comes from the ratepayers, from the working families and businesses. The same people Duke Power is currently looking to increase the rates on, so they can give us a million dollars. We owe it to them to use those funds wisely, openly, and for the greater good of this entire county, not just a few privileged, few land-rich people. Now, some folks, some folks. AQD, and yes, even Duke Energy itself, wants you to believe this money can only be used for one thing. Handing more taxpayers, ratepayer and taxpayer dollars to already wealthy landowners for land that was probably going to be put in conservation anyway. The original legal agreement Duke Power signed with Oconee County is crystal clear. These funds support conserve, conservation initiatives. That covers a whole lot more than just easements, right? Initiatives, initiatives, that, I don't, that don't say easements to me. It says initiatives. That's more than easements. Robbery and our approach is not only illegal, it's just plain dang common sense. Let's also remember, Duke Power's own employees stood up here and tried to twist the meaning of their original promise and contractual agreement to this county. Now suddenly they want to move the goalposts and break their faith with our citizens? I say this, if Duke doesn't like us using their funds for conservation, that helps everybody, not just the chosen few, then hand their money back. We don't need to be held hostage by a utility company. In Oconee County, a handshake and a signature means something. If you go back on your word, you lose our trust. Hey, and let's not, let's not ignore the big donkey in the room. Okay, AQD, AQD, they parade around talking about saving farmland, but they sure didn't mind stripping that man's rights to farm. You didn't mind doing that, did you, buddy? David Mike my hands right to farm, but didn't mind trying to take his rights just a few years ago. Exactly. I think we all remember that. You remember that, don't you? They talk about preserving the rural way of life, but have no problem shutting down the folks who actually live it. Their version of conservation benefits the well-connected and leaves the rest of us holding the bill. Let's look at some real numbers. Recently, a project, the most recent project I had to deal with was, they got $800,000 from the state to put their land in conservation easement. The OCCB kicked in around 1/16. That land would have still went into conservation even if the OCCB did not exist. But that's taxpayer and ratepayer money. That's our money. Would that land have gone into conservation regardless? Yep. Some of these landowners are getting paid out two or three ways. They're getting money from the state, from the county, and then they still get to sell their land. You know, I got land up in Mountain Rest. I didn't buy that land to save when I die, my property rights end. But you want to know what? That land right there, that's an investment for me, that's an investment for my children. They can do with it what they want. I can dang do with it what I want. See, land's an investment. It's what makes us Americans. We get to invest in stuff, we get to own things. Mr. Keys came up here and talked. He got almost a million dollars for his property and still owns it, still gets to sell it. If he is truly committed to conservation, there are lower-cost ways to put their land in an easement. If public money is paying for it, why is it at public land with public access? But that's just my opinion, and I know a lot of people agree with me. As vice chairman of the Conservation Bank, let me say plainly, I voted for conservation easements that made sense, and I followed the rules. Council has always and consistently supported our recommendations, but that doesn't mean we should keep a system that mostly benefits the same well-heeled landowners and outside groups. Ordinary folks need to see some of these benefits, and thank y'all for trying to do that. Conservation should work for everyone, not just those with connections and who are I want to take a moment to commend this council. You refuse to cave to the threats of litigation or the loudest voices in the room. When you choose to return certain funds to Duke Power, you made it clear, Oconee County will not be bullied. Thank you for that. You made a statement for fairness, transparency, and local control. So let me close with this. Keep standing tall, well, most of you. Pass this ordinance. Let's bring conservation out of the country club and into the real world, where regular folks, regular folks, get a shot at the same opportunities as the wealthy and powerful. To the special interest AQD, Upstate Forever, Duke, you had your say, but you don't own this county, the people do. Thank you. Let's pass this ordinance. See you at the voting, though.
No other speakers. All right. I'd like to respond to a couple of things, if I may. I cannot.
Public hearing is a public hearing.
Then I'll, I'll just have to keep my notes in.
Let me give Mr. Root one minute to chime in to fact-check me in case I'm wrong.
You're right, Mr. Brock, and I'm sorry for not being there, but, um, sorry.
That's why he's not here.
Yes, Mr. Mize, you could preserve your comments until you're considering the ordinance. Unless you have discussion after the second is had, that would be the time to respond to the, to the comments. Public hearing, we don't do back and forth.
So once the, once we get to the third reading component, you have a motion and second on the floor, and then the any discussion would be a time to open yourselves.
I got you. Thank you.
But not a back and forth. Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to move on to the third reading of ordinance 2025-12, which is, everybody's aware of what that ordinance says. And I'm going to read it out one more time. An ordinance amending the Oconee County Conservation Bank Ordinance, Oconee County Code Sections 2-398 through 2-409. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Discussion.
Got to have a discussion.
Discussion.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table third reading of ordinance 2025-12.
Got a motion to table ordinance 2025-20. We got a second. No second, no motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to amend Section 2-402 of the Oconee County Code regarding the Oconee County Conservation Bank Fund. I had the following provision at the end of Section 2-402. To read, notwithstanding any other provision of this ordinance, funds donated to the Oconee County Conservation Bank Fund by third parties may be returned to the original donor upon a majority vote of county council, provided that each such return is consistent with any applicable donor agreement or restriction. This provision shall not authorize the use or redirection of donated funds for any purpose other than those set forth in this ordinance or for return to the original donor specified herein. So I would make Section 2-402 read in its entirety, the Oconee County Treasurer shall establish an account separate and distinct from all other funds appropriated by county council called the Oconee County Conservation Bank Fund, the OCCB Fund. The OCCB Fund shall receive monies, awards, and assets from third parties, including but not limited to donors, the state, or from camp, or from the county according to one or more funding measures approved by Oconee County Council. The council acknowledges and agrees that county funding measures should be undertaken as soon as feasible, consistent with overall budget priorities of the county in order to avoid escalating land costs and lost acquisition opportunities. The OCCB Fund shall be used only for the purposes set forth herein. Funds donated to the OCCB by third parties shall not be redirected by council. Notwithstanding the above, funds donated to the Oconee County Conservation Bank Fund by third parties may be returned to the original donor upon a majority vote of council, provided such return is consistent with any applicable donor agreement or restriction. This provision does not authorize the use or redirection of donated funds for any other
A motion?
No second.
Got a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, a point of order.
Mr. Root, Mr. Mize is nodding his head to the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. I believe it would be cleaner for that motion to be by separate ordinance. The subject matter is a little bit desperate or different than the expansion of uses. So I believe that motion for Mr. James would be appropriate for supplemental ordinance. for our supplemental ordinance. Obviously, you don't have to listen to me, um, but I think that would be the cleaner route to go. Thanks.
Would he like to elaborate on that? I mean, why would it be cleaner?
Pointing to, yes, I can hear. Pointing to the subject matter of the amendments that have been had on first and second reading. The subject matters all geared toward the expansion of uses. The issue, and this is third reading, of course, so that brings up, makes us more in focus. But the issue of returning the funds to Duke, there's an ancillary, our incidental motion made last, um, meeting during second reading to have staff investigate that. We did that investigation. That is a separate matter than the expansion of the uses. And so my advice just would be, so we don't have, we're not dealing with any conflation of issues. It's to have separate ordinance to address that amendment.
So I've got a motion on the table.
Got a motion on the table, and I've got a second. Are there any other discussion?
So this would be voting to create another ordinance. Is that correct? Is that what Mr. Root is saying?
That's what he suggested.
But I don't think, I don't think the public's had a chance to understand what the heck this is. It's like Nancy Pelosi, you got to pass to know what's in it. We haven't had time to study this. The public has to know about this. It's got to be, it's going to be a public notice. It's got to be a separate ordinance, Mr. Mize.
Mr. Chair, we've had this third meeting on this. We've had as much comment and time spent on this as we've had on the thing this year. But the public has been well informed.
But you changed it all.
I didn't change it all. I added one provision.
The provision he added, apparently...
Mr. Garland, no, sir.
Apparently has some agreement I hear.
Mr. Garland, I'm sorry. This is the council's portion of the meeting.
I need to take a vote on the latest motion for the provision. So if there's no other discussion, all in favor?
What discussion? Does this include interest that's earned also?
It's...
It's an interest that we divided up between donors, prorata.
I think that would be a question for...
Y'all speak up, so we can hear you.
I would, uh...
So Mr. Root, would this include the interest also earned on the money?
Mr. Root, were you able to hear and understand the question, sir?
No, ma'am, I did not hear a question posed to me.
Would this include interest earned on any or all of the monies?
With the return of the funds, the amendment that Mr. James made?
I believe that is Mr. Elliott's intent. That is the affirmative, yes, sir.
But I guess it's a two-part question that if that amendment passes to the overall ordinance, then I think you'd be clear for the quote redirection of funds back to Duke. But I have not heard a motion for that return at this point in time. Um, and I would assume that the motion would include whether it's principal and interest or just principal. I would assume also that it would probably include interest, um, because the interest came from donated funds.
Yes.
Mr. James, was your intent to include interest as well since that interest was directed?
My intent was just exactly as it was read correctly. So we have made a motion.
Correct. Is that...
It was just to change that, right?
Okay.
And I would, I would make a motion to call the question.
I think you do it, counsel.
Do what, Mr.?
Take it to the vote.
All right. All in favor?
What's the question?
He read, he read the motion.
Would that amount?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make another motion. And, uh, I move that Oak County County Council approve the reimbursement of Oak County County Conservation Bank funds to Duke Energy and return all the remaining private donations to the respective donors in accordance with the general approach outlined by Duke Energy and our legal council. Specifically, the county will return to Duke Energy a prorated amount consisting of the remaining OCCB fund balance lest any council approve, but not yet unpaid, land conservation projects unless the thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars in private donations provided to the OCCB. The thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars in private donations should be returned directly to the original private donors. Upon council approval, Duke Energy will submit a formal memorandum of understanding to Oak County detailing the reimbursement process. Oak County will provide reimbursement to Duke Energy within ninety days of council approval as set forth in this MOU. The county will issue a check to the Foothills Community Foundation, fiduciary manager of the Kiwi Talks Way Relicensing Agreement sponsored Habitat Enhancement Program in accordance with Duke's instructions. The county administrator and legal council are authorized to coordinate and complete this process, ensuring that all steps comply with the MOU and applicable agreements.
Got a motion?
No, second.
Got a second. Are there any discussion on this motion?
I got to just introduce the point of order again. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can y'all hear Mr. Root?
Yeah. Similarly to the last, um, point of order I raised, the full return of the funds wasn't an agenda item exactly. Of course, I understand it could be an expansion of the ordinance, but for FOIA purposes, that would be better captioned as a separate agenda item. Um, if there's an emergency or an exigent circumstance, you could amend the agenda now. If it's not, then I would suggest that it be taken up in the August meeting, just again, counsel.
All right. What do we want to do with this motion? We want to delay this motion?
I've got, I've got a motion on the table, so...
All right, let's take a vote on this motion. If there's no other discussion.
Is there a second?
I had a second.
I have a second.
All in favor? And the motion passes. Now we're going straight to the third reading. Ordinance amending Oak County County Conservation Bank ordinance, Oak County County Code sections two dash three ninety-eight through two dash four zero nine. Do I have a motion to pass this ordinance?
Second.
Discussion. No discussion. All in favor?
Opponents?
All right. Moving on. Uh, second readings, following ordinance. We don't have any for this meeting. At this time, I'm going to bring Mr. Durham back in. We're at the first reading, Mr. Durham, of twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
I now have first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen and ordinance amending chapter twenty, law enforcement of the Oak County County Code of ordinances by adding article five entitled prohibited or restricted conduct, solicitation, obstruction of public streets, unauthorized camping in order to address certain hazards and public harm related thereto and other related matters.
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? You're not all in favor? Uh...
Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen and ordinance amending chapter twenty, law enforcement of the Oak County County Code of ordinances by adding article six entitled public nuisances in order to address certain hazards and public harm related thereto and other related matters.
Make a motion. Motion? Second. Any discussion? You're not all in favor? Uh...
Discussing regarding action items, discuss annexation and rezoning issues related to properties contiguous to or nearby municipal corporate limits.
Ms. Brock?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, in recent weeks, we were made aware of an instance where a municipality had intended to rezone non-municipal parcels in related to a proposed development. That was brought to our attention from citizen complaints. There is very little information available to citizens or the county on this municipality's website. And I thought that maybe this would be a point of discussion so that we can work through the process as cities begin to annex properties or look to annex properties and how that impacts its surrounding citizens, which are, of course, county residents, and how we can work together, who is council members, to help identify those instances. Because this particular instance, again, was not on any website. We were not notified through our planning office. It just so happened that one of our council members received a complaint, and it took us a little bit of time to dive into. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and have discussion, um, regarding how council would like to move forward with that and if there's a provision that you believe staff could work with the cities and municipalities in this fashion so that this doesn't happen again.
Yeah, we've had rezoning signs up, but still no information on their website.
We were unable to find the information, which was very difficult for citizens.
So this is different than the annexation that goes, that's, you know, Wahole right now?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is something that I, we were seeing throughout the state, but not in Oak County as much yet. I think we're going to see more of it especially with their tightened standards and the density standards. I know it's a big deal in Pickens County where the municipalities are rezoning in proposed developments to bypass the standards they passed in the last year. The way state laws are written, the county has no say whether the annex or not, correct?
The annexation component, I believe, is one part of it. And yes, sir, you are correct. I believe this time the other part of it was that a municipality was trying to dictate uses and land development standards on land that's not inside city limits at the time of the rezoning. So the cart was before the horse, so to speak. And it did not give council members an opportunity to provide citizens with information or to help citizens navigate through an information system of said municipality because information simply did not exist. It was obtained through a FOIA, but even that information did not provide enough of concrete stand for us as county rats to provide information back to the citizens about what the end result may be if this action had continued and been approved.
This is still continuing? Are they still having a hearing Tuesday or Monday?
To my knowledge, it is still continuing. I see Mr. Mize is nodding.
They were having, they were holding a planning meeting yesterday, and I haven't had any conversation with them since.
Thank you, Mr. Mize. This is the first time that this instance has happened, but as you said, Mr. Durham, I do believe that we will face this again. And if we don't have an answer coming from council, this may be something that we can send out to our counterparts throughout the rest of the state. If this is going to become common, there may be a better approach that we can take or work with the cities on these annexations or rezonings prior to annexation happening.
What I do is the...
In the immediate, I feel like it, uh... Ms. Brock maybe can set up a meeting between Seneca, the municipality, and us. And let, well, we'll let her decide who will attend that meeting to see how this problem originated from the beginning. Try to get to the bottom of why they still going to proceed, even though it was about municipal jurisdiction to do what they're doing.
So I don't, I don't, I don't know state law governing municipals. But it doesn't seem logical to me that you can have a rezoning hearing for land that is not within your jurisdiction.
Mr. Root may want to chime in on this, but in my elementary thinking pattern, it seems that their rezoning would be null because it's not municipal.
I agree with both of you all. It's, they need to have jurisdiction over the property to, for their planning commission, their council to hear it.
I mean, it seems to me like it's a method to try to give the developer peace of mind that they're going to get the rezoning they want before they agree to the land being annexed. That's what it is.
And obviously, the incentive there would be once it's annexed into the municipality, that tax, you know, they're going to pay that municipal tax on top of it. So they want some sort of guarantee prior to doing that. I don't know that that guarantee would hold water if it was a bucket, but...
So is water part of the deal? Is providing that neighborhood, is water part of the deal?
I have not seen any incentive or material internal documents. I have seen a sketch drawing. I don't believe it's an architectural standard or engineer standard sketch. It's more like a conceptual sketch drawing. But I don't know any internal documents or incentive packages that may or may not hold in discuss.
So in Pickens County, they passed last year a density standard similar to what we did, but it's layered, some areas more or less. And now the municipalities, the developers that contact the municipality, hey, annex us in so we can build ten houses per acre.
This particular developer, they requested annexation right away.
And just for record posterity sake, I mean, it is contiguous to other municipal properties. This time, it just seems like the system itself got twisted. And instead of stopping to fix what was clearly incorrect about the process, it appears that they just kept going.
It sounds like they want assurance that they're going to be able to bypass the county's density standard
Right.
before they start running it in.
I wish I had looked and saw what the zoning model they were proposing and what the density would allow within that zoning model. Because I, when you look at the plot, once we got it, it would fall within the county's density numbers. But that same information we got has changed a few times since then. So it's almost as an effort to get rezoned in there and then up the density once it's annexed and rezoned.
So Ms. Brock, can you, can you put us a meeting together?
I sure will.
With Mr. Mulder, his planning commission, our planning commission.
So, um, just, just to clarify, there may be certain members that they're planning commission. Otherwise, it would be considered a public meeting, and that may be harder to navigate for scheduling purposes. If it's okay with you. They're a planning director, potentially they're a planning chairperson.
I think it needs to, whatever solution you come to, talk to the other communities as well. I'm sure somebody want to build a hundred fifty houses on Playground Road, Wahole would want to annex them in as well so they could do that. So it's, I think there's going to be a growing problem that we've seen other places now that the county standards is a little bit more stricter.
What I'm afraid of, one does, the others will follow suit with the model.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Brock.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to do that just on direction purposes and unless Mr. Root determines that a motion is safe.
I think it would be good for council to make a motion to direct you to set up a meeting, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Root.
I'll make a motion to have Ms. Brock set up a meeting with appropriate individuals from county and the city of Seneca to discuss this matter.
Motion and second. Any other discussing on that? Out here not all in favor? All right, now we'll move on to council committee reports. We have real estate facilities and land management committee. Mr. Elliott?
The real estate facilities and land management committee met on June the third, twenty twenty five. Mr. Kyle Reed presented a more cost-efficient option for proposed parking sidewalk improvements in the Seneca library. The next step in this project is to talk to the city of Seneca regarding these proposed improvements. Mr. Shannon provided an update to the committee regarding new safety and security measures taking place in various county facilities and among staff. The next meeting of this committee will be Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, four thirty P M.
The savings from that sidewalk, do y'all remember how much it was, that reworking it?
One fifty.
Hundred fifty, and that was thanks to Mr. Hart.
Hundred fifty grand.
Looking at it and saying, let's do this and save the taxpayers a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Thank you for doing it, Mr. Hart. Uh, next we have law enforcement, public safety, health, and welfare committee, Mr. Myers.
Okay, we, Law Enforcement, Public Safety, Health, and Welfare Committee met on June the third, twenty twenty five, it was a special meeting. Met with Sheriff Crenshaw. He provided a detailed update regarding all his ordinance enforcement specifically in relation to fraternities located in O'Conne County. The committee and Sheriff Crenshaw also reviewed the trespass enforcement authorization program along with ordinances regarding prohibited or restricted conduct and public nuisance, which will be sent to full council for consideration of approval. The committee also discussed proposed ordinance changes for the rescue squad advisory commission and fire service advisory commission and unanimously voted to send those proposed ordinance changes to full council for consideration of approval. After a brief discussion with Chief Scott Cryan, the committee unanimously voted to allow volunteer firefighters to use their personal physicians for completions of their annual fire physicals and our next law enforcement, public safety, health, and welfare committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September the sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Our building code appeals board two at order seats, still no question as of file. We have a lengthy executive session. You'll stand by while I call out the need of motion to enter executive session to do this. One, the following four discussed regarding an economic development matter for the following four projects, Project Beamer, Project Joe, Project Joshua, Project Sore, and to receive legal advice on the following and discuss potential contractual matter related to property and development proposals. Receive legal advice regarding current structure and potential restructuring of the O'Conne Joint Regional Superior Authority. Receive legal advice and discuss additional settlement agreements to OP or litigation. Receive legal advice and discuss employment slash personnel matters related to potential restructuring of certain O'Conne County government departments and divisions. Receive legal advice and discuss potential contractual matter slash issue related to ordinance services.
Make a motion.
Motion, second. Second, all in favor?
Motion to return from executive session.
Motion second, all in favor?
All right, so we need to take one action coming out of the executive session with Mr. Root. He's going to word that motion for us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. In relation to item number seven on the executive session menu, this is the receipt of legal advice and the discussion of additional settlement agreements in relation to the opioid litigation. We need a motion to proceed with the SANDOZ settlement participation as discussed.
Motion second, all in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.